All right. I'll declare the meeting to be in order and start at 7:32. We please have a roll call.
Ms. Christian?
Here.
Mr. Glabiger?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Ms. Bector Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Unical?
Here.
Ms. Shue?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have removed? Seen and hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Maura. Thank you, Barbara. Maura was the first, Barbara's the second. We do a roll call, please.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Gla-- Mr. Glabiger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Bector Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Shue?
Okay, the motion passes. Do we have any public? No, no public. All right, no public comment. Next item on the agenda, the audit presentation. Adam?
Andrew.
Andrew, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I didn't. I'm Andrew from Southern Fox. Ed couldn't make it this year, so I came out instead, and I think... I've been at Southern Fox for seven years, and I've been involved in this audit for the last four or five years. So I'm happy to come out and see some of the board members that I've read about. Before I start presenting the audit, I'd like to thank the staff, Anna, Kate, and the rest of the... Rest of the staff for the hard work during the audit. Appreciate it, a lot of work, so... Thank you. Everybody should have in the audit packet, I think they should have two documents from us. The first is the communication with those charged with governance. This is a required communication. Basically, if there's any disagreements with management or any difficulties during audit, we would say that here, but fortunately, there were no such matters. This also has two exhibits. The first one is the audit adjustments. I think there were seven on this report. Three of them were client-provided entries, those should be indicated. And two of them were related to the net pension liability, the IMRF, and the OPEB liability. The pension is provided to us by village auditors, and we get the information for the OPEB adjustment from the actuaries. Exhibit two. These are some entries that were proposed but not posted because they weren't material. Those are both related to the new lease standard. That wasn't placed this year. I believe there's a footnote. If I'm going too fast, or anybody has questions, feel free to interrupt. Next is the audit report itself. We have our independent audit report, and the first item there... Is our audit opinion, which is an unmodified opinion, or a clean opinion. That is followed by the management discussion analysis, and that has kind of a... A narrative-style summary of some financial highlights during the year, and I'll actually touch on a few of those briefly for you guys. On page... Page nine. That's where we have the government-wide financial statements. These are full accrual... Statements, as opposed to fund financial statements, which are modified accrual. The fund statements tend to focus on more current items, and the purpose of the government-wide is to show some of the longer non-current items. And those would be things like capital assets. And the non-current liabilities, there's the debt items, and then there's the net pension liability and the OPEB liability. A few things to point out on this statement of net position. Despite paying down $390,000 of debt principal, the library did see an increase of about $1 million in cash investments. I know these aren't comparative, but there's an increase there year over year. You also notice that this year, there's a net pension liability instead of a net pension asset. You'll see that down there. This information is... So the library has approximately 20% share of the village portion of this, and we take that information and, based on the activity during the year, we post it, and depending on... Depending on the activity, and in this case, it's mostly the investment performance that causes it to be a liability this year. In future, that could end up being asset again, and it might go back and forth, just depending on various factors. So on the next page, the statement of activities. I'd like to point out, the current year change in net position is a... A positive bottom line for the library, $376,000. Just to point out, since this is full accrual, it doesn't include purchasing of capital assets, which were about $900,000 in the current year, but it does include depreciation expense, which is about $1.5 million. And that's included in that library activities expense amount. It's a positive net change this year. After that, we've got some of the fund statements. I think those start on page 14, if you're following along. I'll point out... 14 and 15. Total government funds, positive bottom line of about $957,000. And I believe this is compared to last year, $844,000. And the general fund was a positive $1.1 million before transfers. About $12,500 went to debt service, $1.1 million to the capital improvements fund. Next, we have just a few things to point out on the budget-to-actual analysis. Couple pages. Where that starts on page 17. I just want to point out... Revenues, there was a positive variance of $234,000 this year, and then, as far as expenditures go, there's a positive variance of $448,000. It actually... It's a positive variance of about 2.9% in revenues and a positive variance of about 6% in expenses. I believe the only negative variance in the expenditure side was maintenance, about $5,000. Biggest... The biggest savings was salaries and employee benefits line there. Those were some of the key points that I wanted to touch on. Any questions?
So, we have a little bit of an issue with potential litigation. Is there any footnote related to that?
No.
I don't...
That came up after...
Yeah, it came up after they were done.
The audit was... Yeah, so we should, NRI should have...
You can be in touch about that.
Yep.
For next year. Do we have any questions? Is there a motion to approve the audit report as presented?
Motion to approve the audit report as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glabiger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Bector Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Shue?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you for coming and presenting to us.
Thank you. It was nice to meet you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Next item on the agenda is the staff report. Kate?
So, it is that we're in the midst of our One Book, One Northbrook, and we had our author visit last night with the author of Clark and Division, Naomi Hirahara. And she was delightful. So we had about 130 people attend in person, and then we had a number of people that also, I didn't get the exact number for the livestream, I know there were over 100 signed up, and a number of people were also sending out the recording in a couple days. She also stayed after and signed copies, which we had not originally contracted with her to do, so I really appreciated that she just was like, "Oh yeah, I'll stay, whatever you guys need," which was really lovely. And had a really great conversation, talking about her experiences writing a book, the book, and then also just about the... Lack of knowledge that there was such a huge influx of Japanese-Americans during World War II when they were removed from the camps and relocated. That was something I know I never learned about in school, and Naomi even said, like, she found it hard at first to find information at all on it. So it was a great conversation, and we were very grateful to the Friends of the Library for their generous support, being able to bring an author out for the first time. Speaking of the Friends, I asked... Kelly is our Friends liaison, and it is also in the midst of One Book, One Northbrook, Friends of the Library Week, and so I asked her to just share some of the stuff that is going on that the Friends have planned.
Yeah, so it is currently National Friends of the Library Week. Our Friends group is very active. Last year, they started a member engagement committee, and one of their main duties is to do some event planning, event support, to raise awareness of the Friends during this very special week, National Friends of the Library Week. It did coincide this year with One Book, and so they are cosponsoring One Book, One Northbrook, and a lot of the events that they are doing are part of that. You might have noticed there was a table set up as you were coming in tonight. The Friends have a table in the lobby all this week to promote their organization. Anybody can join the Friends. If you're not a member, you are welcome to join. There's information in the bookshop about that. You don't even have to be a Northbrook resident, anybody can join. And they've got a few things still coming up this week. They are having a book sale, so we do have a bookshop here in the library, which I'm sure you all are aware of on the west side of the building. That is ongoing, there's always a book sale. But then they do a bigger event a few times a year where they sell items that maybe don't fit in the bookshop, but they have in storage, or try to highlight materials and display them differently. And we've tried a few different locations over the past couple of years, and we're going to try the civic room for this book sale. It's a little too cold and wet to go outside for an outdoor book sale. We found the lobby to be kind of crowded, so this time it's in the civic room. We'll see how that goes. And then, there is a member-exclusive event. Membership does have its privileges, they like to say. And on Saturday night, they're showing Minari. So if you are a member of the Friends, I'd like to extend an invitation from the Friends for all of you to attend. There will be a small reception with some hors d'oeuvres being served at 7:00 PM, and then the movie will start at 7:30 in the auditorium.
Without the refreshments.
Right. You can only eat the refreshments outside of the auditorium.
Our rule, not theirs. Thanks, Kelly. A couple other items from my report. I know I did email the board, but I wanted to also just follow up here at the meeting and share that, as reported, there is a suspect in custody for the swatting attacks on the area libraries. And so, we are... We have not received, after our... The one that we'd... The one swatting attack that did happen, we have not received any others. And we certainly hope that this is the end of it. But we were very grateful to our Northbrook Police Department for letting us know and keeping us updated, as well as the FBI Task Force, who eventually did arrest someone who will be tried, and hopefully, this will not happen again, because it wasn't terribly fun. Something that is a little bit more fun is the Illinois Library Association Annual Conference, and that is happening next week. So we have several staff that are going, myself included. So I will be down in Springfield for several days, and we will also be receiving at the awards banquet the award that Illinois Libraries Present received for our collaboration efforts in bringing statewide programming across the state to people. Excited to be down there for that, and looking forward to a good conference. And then, I don't have anything else for my report unless anyone has any questions on anything in my report.
See a lot of no's and the nodding. So, there's no questions for Kate. The next item is any board member reports? Do any board members have anything they'd like to report?
I would just mention, I was at last night's event and thought it was incredibly interesting. I don't generally read historical fiction, so this was a little bit outside of my lane, and found the book and the discussion really helpful and interesting, and the people in attendance were very engaged in the conversation.
And I would just add, I was also there, and I just want to compliment the entire library staff for how well-run the event was, and just, you know, it was riveting and interesting. Stacy, everything Stacy's already said, so I was so glad I was able to be there.
Anybody else? Okay, well, good job for staff on the presentation last night. Next item is unfinished business. The first item on unfinished business is the appointment to fill the vacant trustee position. So, on October 9th this month, we met and interviewed a number of the applicants. It was amazing how many applicants there were this year, they were such high-quality. It was a very difficult decision, but the board did reach the consensus that we thought Nimesh Patel, who was here tonight, would be a great addition to the board. And so, I'm going to ask Stacy if you would like to make a motion to appoint Nimesh Patel to fill the vacant trustee position.
Yes, I move to appoint Nimesh Patel to our open trustee seat.
Thank you, Stacy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Janet. Please have a roll call, and if everyone, if you'd like to comment or say anything about the interview process, please feel free when you're passing your vote.
Ms. Christian?
Yes, and welcome. We're very honored.
Glabiger?
Yes. Nimesh, welcome. Looking forward to working with you, and I vote affirmatively.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes, welcome to the board. We're looking forward to it.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes, and I can only add, welcome.
Ms. Unical?
Yes. And I too have been so happy that you were on the board. It was a fascinating process, so many good, thoughtful, interesting, and passionate. And it was unanimous that we were pleased to invite you, so thank you.
Ms. Shue?
Yes, welcome, and we're excited to have you.
Okay, so the motion passes. Congratulations, Nimesh. So the next step, you'll be meeting with Kate, who I understand has already been working with you to schedule a time for some training. And then, at the next month's meeting, you will be formally sworn in at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to bring family, friends, anyone who you'd like to be present, feel free. Usually, it's a little nice opportunity for them to come and see what it is you'll be doing. And they're more than welcome to join us for as long as they'd like during the meeting.
Or any meeting.
Or any meeting, but this one particularly.
Just come and just be coming.
This one particularly.
We're open to the public.
Next item on the agenda is the tax levy. So Anna provided some additional information, which we received a couple days ago. But Anna, would you like to take a moment to kind of give us a little bit of an update?
Sure, so I adjusted the levy to be a 3% overall increase. I also asked other libraries about what they spend on their personnel, their materials, and programming, just to make sure we were in line with that. And we do, we mirror what the other local libraries are spending. And then, we looked at the per capita funding. We looked at our operating budget, and then the number of people in the community. And although we're a little higher, you know, everybody was kind of in line with that. Some were higher, some were lower. And then, the other thing I presented, or I showed, is that 4% of the property tax bill is allocated to the library for the Village of Northbrook. I don't know if anybody has any questions on the information that I provided.
Do you know what percentage of other villages or these local libraries, like...
It generally falls between 3% and 5%. Okay. I've not seen any... There's some that might fall... In different states, lower than that, but in Illinois, 3% to 5% is...
Is there anything else anybody would have a question about?
This was a great memo. Thank you so much, Anna.
Oh, you're welcome.
Besides the new information, is there any general comments or questions anyone has about the budget?
Levy.
I'm sorry, the levy.
That's okay.
You are correct.
We do need to approve it tonight because the village wants it.
I just want to make sure that people...
Yeah, no, no, but I didn't say that. I meant to say that when I...
Okay.
When I was talking, sorry.
Yeah. So I have...
I wrote the wrong amount, though, in it.
Is it in here in the memo?
Okay. Look it to the last page.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 levy on the amount of $9,885,230? Okay, thank you, Jamie. Just a second. Barbara, thank you. You rose your hand first, please. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glabiger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Shue?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Next item on the agenda, so we have a couple of staff questions for the board. Two aspects to that, so did you circulate the...
No, I was waiting until after the board looked.
So Kate had circulated for us to review and to send back comments just to her. Any comments on the response to the questions we received? And we discussed the meeting on October 9th. So, is there any comments or questions anyone has outside of what was already communicated to Kate?
No, that the letter was great. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. So, that letter will be sent out then after the meeting tonight to directly respond to several of the questions we'd already received.
I was going to send it tomorrow morning.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, whether it's tonight or tomorrow, I'm just saying after the meeting. And then, let's read through the page here with the other questions.
Here, it's on here, if that helps.
Anna, I'd like to read. So... There was a comment or a question really about suggesting that the staff shadow some of the... I'm sorry, the board shadowed some of the staff. Kate and I discussed a little bit, and we don't want to have the board kind of come across as... Being a little bit overly involved in the day-to-day when the reality of the situation is that Kate reports to us, not the staff. So we didn't think that would be the best idea for us to do, because we don't want to give the staff the wrong impression that we are in some way, shape, or form overseeing what it is they're doing. But if anyone does want to learn about staff, we will continue, I think, over the course of the next few months, to have staff...
Yes.
Present to us so that we learn more about staff functions and activities. It's not to say when you're in the library, you can't ask staff questions, but we didn't think that having us formally shadow would be something that would give the right message. There was another comment, really more so than a question, expressing concern that members of the board may have asked for some form of preferential treatment. We don't know who, what, when, why, or how, but we do want to be clear so the staff understands, and the board as well understands, that the board is not expected to receive or supposed to receive any special treatment. And so, if there are any sort of requests, then as president of the board, we ask that that request by the staff be conveyed to Kate or Kelly so that they can appropriately let the board member know that the bounds of appropriateness have been overstepped. Please, on the board, be careful and conscientious when you're here as to what you say and do so that staff don't get the wrong impression. But those were really the questions and our comments that we received. We'll continue as we have meetings in the coming months to receive hopefully additional comments and respond to them. We do appreciate the fact that staff have been taking the time to submit the questions to us. Next item on the agenda is the strategic plan project update. So, Kate, you're going to give us the update.
Yes. So, our community-wide survey launched, and we have almost 1,300 responses so far, so we're very excited about that. And I would... I know I shared with all of you by email, but if you have not, or if you, you know, would consider sharing it with your networks again, we want to try and make sure we get as large of a cross-section of the community as possible. You know, when, fast-forward, libraries originally reported that, you know, community-wide survey typically gets 2% to 3% of the population, so we are at that. I was hoping to be at more like 20%, which is 7,000, so we're not there. But I do think that we can certainly get more. And Kelly and I have reached out to all of our individual contacts, as well as all of our community partners this week, in order to ask them to share with all of their networks as well. So we want to make sure that we can get it in front of as many eyes as possible, and it is not just adults. You know, we've shared it with the high school and teen groups. You know, we want to hear from everyone in the community, what they would like to see in terms of... You know, from the library, in terms of how we can serve them. So, we will be starting our focus groups coming up in November, and we have a number of focus groups set up with the business community, with the Korean Cultural Center, with the teens, with senior citizens, with parents. So we've tried to represent a really good cross-section of the community. So that will be another layer on top of the community-wide survey that we're doing, although we do hope that those people also all take the survey. And then, we also have staff going out in the community with iPads at different places to ask people to fill out the survey. It takes less than 10 minutes, so we're hoping that we'll also get some people that maybe wouldn't see it in other communication channels that way.
I'm just pure curiosity, where are they? Where are they going?
Oh, Kelly said...
Some of them, like some...
Some said several park district locations, T-PAC, Heritage Oaks, two others, and the North Suburban YMCA.
Yeah, and then we also have laptops set up all over the library so that people can, you know, as they are perusing the books, they can pop down and share their thoughts, hopefully. And so, we also do, you know, we wanted... We deliberately did not do any type of physical mailing from a sustainability aspect, but staff do also all have access to a PDF copy that can be printed if there is someone that is not able to fill out the survey on a computer. So, as far as I'm aware, I don't think we've gotten any printed copies. So, that is going really well as well. And so, in terms of kind of what will happen next with the strategic plan, the next step is... the next step is a capacity assessment. This also ties in closely with the Lilly Zhang report and that piece of things. So Lilly and Amanda Standifer from Fast Forward Libraries worked on a survey together that addressed not only some of the recommendations in Lilly's report about staff bandwidth, but that will also help, that they took Amanda's original capacity survey and kind of have adapted it. And so Amanda's survey, the goal is to find out where are we at in terms of our organizational lifecycle? Do we have the infrastructure necessary, bless you, to be able to accomplish the strategic goals that we'll be setting? And then we also want to look at individual staff capacity and ability to take on new work and work on the goals and objectives that will be part of the strategic plan. The board will also be asked to fill out this survey. So we're finalizing it and hope to have it out the end of next week and we'll have it out for a couple of weeks. But just be aware that that will be coming. And then after that, we will have, Amanda will be compiling the report and Lilly will be then working with us to analyze it and use the data that we've received from that along with the report from them to help inform the strategic planning process moving forward. So a couple of things that that includes are a review of the capacity report with the managers and assistant managers in December. And then our strategic plan committee, which includes Stacy and Barbara, will have an opportunity to review the report and prep for our staff retreat in January. The staff retreat is January 19th. We will be bringing in, Fast Forward will be here in person and will be doing a review of the community-wide survey as well as the staff capacity assessment, kind of laying out all of the information that has been gathered to help get feedback from staff so that then when we're working on drafting the plan, we've heard from all of the relevant parties. And then the day after that, the board will be having their retreat. And I believe, although Jennifer will correct me if I'm incorrect, we've heard from.
Everyone.
Everyone. I have the date wrong. I said the 30th, but it's actually the 20th. I'm sorry, Jay. I had a lot of typos in this meeting. And so the board retreat will also be in person here at the library with Fast Forward Libraries. And will be a chance for the board to hear the full analysis of everything that Amanda and her team have put together.
If we.
Did we have time on that?
Well, Nimesh.
I said Matt.
And.
Has Nimesh had an opportunity to?
I have, I have not given him any of the dates for anything yet.
All right, so Saturday, January 20th is what the date for the board retreat? And what were the times?
Nine to noon.
Is that the consensus or is that the two times that were on the?
I think I'm the one who, I think I was the last one to go and I think nine to one was the, it looked like it was the most popular.
It was like the range, but that's not gonna be the whole time. It might go like what, 10? It's in the morning.
Yes, I think, I had on my, I had in my notes nine to noon, but we can also, I'll confirm with Amanda because I think.
It was four hours, right?
I think she said it would actually probably only need to be three.
Okay.
So.
So if you wouldn't mind marking your calendar so that you'll know, everyone else hopefully has it already marked.
And then the plan is to have the plan presented to the board at the March 21st board meeting. And then after the plan is approved by the board, the planning, the strategic planning committee will work on the implementation guide and put all of that together once all of the goals and objectives have been approved. So that is what is coming up for the strategic plan.
Any questions? Okay, thanks, Kate. Next item on the agenda is a discussion about Lilly Zhang's report. So on October 4th, we met, we had Lilly present to the board 2023 report, which was included also with the board packet minutes. So Lilly had a number of recommendations and we are looking forward to seeing those recommendations incorporated into the strategic plan. And then we're also gonna be having a follow-up with Lilly about a year where she'll be coming back to do follow-up. Yes, I'm sorry, they will be coming back to do follow-up surveys and report back to us of whether or not we made progress, which hopefully we will make. And we're, you know, just generally speaking, looking forward to seeing the progress we can make and improvement we can make within both the EDR report and the strategic plan. Any comments or questions by anybody with respect to Lilly's report?
Add just a couple of items before we.
If you would like to, sure.
Yeah, so we had our, so we've been meeting with Lilly now that we've received the report. And one of the things that I just wanted to bring up, I know the board did have an opportunity to discuss this after the presentation with Lilly. But I know I've also now had more time as well to go over everything. And so I thought this was a good opportunity to just share some of that with the board. I know that the board has expressed in a non, at the October 4th meeting, how much they appreciated the feedback from staff and to just share that this was a long process. If you guys recall, we started working with Lilly and talking about this in February. So it's now October. And this is something that staff were very eager to see done. And I think the fact that we had a 90% participation rate speaks really highly. Since the, since Lilly met with the board and with the staff, we have definitely looked at what is in the report. And Anna and Kelly and Lori Priolletti and I have been meeting regularly to talk through some of the recommendations and to talk through some of the items that came up as key findings and things that we need to be working on. And while I think we can all celebrate that in the report, there was not any evidence of systemic discrimination or harassment, that there are certainly, as in every organization, opportunities for growth. And I know that one of those key areas was staff feeling like they did not have an advocate for them. And, and so as the board have, has pointed out and knows, you know, you have one employee. That employee is me. And then everyone else on staff reports to me and I'm in charge of the daily operations. And so that, I know in reading the report, really cut me to the quick because I was like, but I'm your advocate. And so the fact that they did not, that there were groups of staff that did not feel that. I think it's really important that they, obviously recognizing that they felt that I was not standing up for them with the board. And so I wanted to use this as an opportunity to say within the report that, you know, the feelings that staff had are, are something that the board has heard and acknowledged, that we in admin have heard and acknowledged and we know that we need to work on things. We know that there are things that we do do well, but there are also opportunities where we can really improve. And I think one of the things that the staff will hear in the response that the board put together from the staff questions is the transparency about voting. And, you know, I think Jay modeled that so, so well tonight and saying like, please share some of the process about how we went about, how the board went about finding someone to fill the trustee vacancy seat. And so I think that acknowledging that there are areas that we can grow in is really important for us as individuals as well as as a group. And I for one am, I'm excited to be able to continue to improve our organization. I do think that we are one of the top libraries in the country and that our community really supports us and that helps us want to do good work. And I think that any organization can do, do better. And the pandemic has been a time that has definitely highlighted things that were in existence before, but also has made them more challenging. And so this is a great opportunity for us to really pause and reflect on how we can do better. Not just pause and reflect, actually do work to make us better. And so, so you know, I, I know talking about things that you're not doing well is never fun, but I think it's really important and I think it's good to model that failing is important because it shows that you're, it isn't whether or not you will fail. Of course, we will fail at things. It's what we use to learn. And how do we take that and learn from it so we're not making the same mistakes again? And I know that staff are eager to see us trying, hopefully not too much with the failing, but also making sure that we're showing that even when we do something that isn't maybe quite what they would hope for, what the community hopes for, that we're gonna learn from that and continue to improve.
And there's no way that you can label any of this a failure. That's really not anywhere near where we're starting from. We're just asking the question, can it be better? And that's a question that doesn't mean that something failed. So I think.
That's a very good.
Make sure that you don't go in with a mindset that nothing you did was right or appropriate or meaningful because you're just always, we're always asking that question, can we be better? No matter what it is. So please, no failure. Absolutely not.
Good point, Barbara. Anybody else have any thoughts to share?
Question about some of the, the comments especially, and so, you know, the, that I feel respected and valued by the library board. You know, that is, you know, that's a number that, again, I, doesn't really make me swell with pride. So, and so are we going to, I'm also gonna reflect on this, think about ways to improve, but are there, is part of the training going to be sort of, will there be opportunities for training and or coaching? Is that what we're looking at or is this just, and because I wasn't able to make the meeting on the 4th, this was probably discussed, sort of like what is, what are we looking at as a sort of a next step?
Yeah, so the next step in the process is to take the findings and recommendations and I think sit with them, like you were talking about. And, and then making a strategy. So the recommendations are there, but they're not necessarily a strategy. They don't have measurable goals associated with them yet. And so that will be worked into the strategic plan so that they will be tied directly together so that we will have specific goals and objectives and action plans with timelines and KPIs or other measures that we will use in order to evaluate the efficacy of what we're doing. Lilly is, you know, as part of our contract with them, they will be continuing to work with us through this. Part of that is assisting with helping us develop the strategy and also possibly doing some training, but I think maybe not like training the way that we would typically think of it or the way that I'm typically thinking of it. And so I think that's one of the things that will come up as we have these strategic plan meetings and discussions is talking about what are the things from the report that we feel we really want to be focusing our attention on? Because as Lilly keeps pointing out, if we're focusing on everything, then you're actually focusing on nothing. And so we do have a tendency to want to try and fix everything at once. And, and so that I think is gonna be the hardest thing for us as an organization is saying, well, no, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna work on fixing things, but we can't immediately fix every single thing that is in here. So what can we do to move the needle in a way that is gonna have the biggest impact for our staff and patrons? So.
Well, as a concrete example, where the first recommendation is related to library-wide projects. And so Kate is working with the staff and like trying to A, define what is a project and B then to try and categorize what the projects are that they're working on and determine what projects are not as necessary so that staff aren't feeling overloaded and overworked. So they can sort of prioritize and then determine those that should be focused on, those that can be put back into the background and come back to later when staff have more available time or those additional staff.
And Kelly and Anna, Lori and I have also been meeting in addition to our regular, you know, weekly meetings to talk through what do the four of us need to do? Like how are we, what, what are we doing in terms of decision-making that is causing this disconnect with staff? So it's taking and saying like, okay, so we have this decision and how did we make it and what can we do? So kind of using it as an opportunity to think through how we're doing things. And that will just take, I mean, that is something that will just be ongoing. We also have been working with Charmed Foundation, who you may remember is, they've done some coaching with us with a number of different staff. They've did the 360 evals of me back in 18 and 19. They're a nonprofit organization that works with units of local government as well as faith-based leadership to offer training and support. And so they're gonna be working with the four of us on how can we more effectively communicate the decisions that we are making and making sure we're following up on the feedback, that type of thing. So that, those are also all things that are in process already. None of those, of course, relate to the board, but I really view the strategic planning process as an opportunity for the board to really think about what, you know, what in here does the board want to focus your attention?
Any other questions or comments?
It just seemed that when the question was posed to Lilly, that question about the board, they, they emphasized that it's a difficult question because there's very little interaction. And, and Lilly was almost, it wasn't even included in the top 10 or whatever. It's almost like a goal that, okay, thank you for mentioning it, but there are big things to worry about.
I mean, I think like we're, we're representing the Northbrook community. I think the Northbrook community is so thankful and for the library staff. And so I think we owe it to the Northbrook community to sort of be able to communicate that or express that in some way. I'm not exactly sure how to go about that.
We can do part of that later in the agenda.
Yeah. Excellent point. That, we can, we can table that until January 20th.
Jamie, do you have any other thoughts?
I was just gonna say that in terms of the, the board, one of the things like, you know, we approved the, like having Lilly start with this, we have this married with the strategic plan. I think that's our biggest demonstration to our kind of dedication to this. And I think that that should not be forgotten in one thing, but at, at the same time, as we go on this, like you said, this is a journey, right? Like, like where are we going? I think we're definitely like, we're putting our best foot forward and it's definitely in the right direction. And what we can do is all the things they've suggested that Kate and admin are working on, we can continue instead of just like demonstrate this, we're not just checking the box, but we'll continue like be with you guys on this journey. We're gonna keep the, you know, your goals and objectives, like, guys, hold you accountable for it. So I think that's what the board can do. And I do think like there, like between us and the staff, like there is this structural kind of, you know, there's so many layers. We do not like interact with them, you know, directly. So there are things that's like, I think shown from the report that's really about like transparency and communication, how things lost in translation, this and that, that I think these are improvements areas that we can definitely make it better, but to also acknowledge that I don't think we're at a very bad state either. Yeah.
And our job is to do all the things that are in whatever we agree to do as board members. And I think it's important that you all administrative staff remind them that it doesn't have to be a personal relationship by giving them a wonderful salary increase, by providing them all the resources that they need. That's our responsibility as members of the community and representing the community and how much we value them. That's our job. Our job is to not make them like us or to them to know me. Our job as a board is to provide the support, the respect, the resources that we can responsibly. So I'm not too concerned about them really getting to know me. I want them to know that my responsibility is to them, to support them as a member of the board.
I don't think that.
All right, then. I think that wraps up the question about the Lilly Zhang report. Next item on the agenda is the new business. First item under new business is our per capita grant annual requirements review. Kate's going to give an overview and answer questions.
So every year, in order to apply for our annual per capita grant from the State Library, we are, the board is required to review serving our public, which is essentially the state standards for how, best practices for libraries. And so the standards were included in your packet along with the checklist at the end of each chapter. So it goes through all of the different areas of operation for the library. I have a spreadsheet that I put together to show where we are at. And in general, we are in a really good place. We meet the standards, the things that we are not in compliance with. In a lot of cases, like we don't do a podcast because we made a conscious choice to not have a podcast. There are a couple of things that have been on the to-do list for the last few years, one of which is a security camera policy, which we were going to do as part of the camera upgrades, which got delayed because we didn't get bids. And then, so Jay helpfully pointed out that we could still do the policy. So Kelly and I are going to work on that and we will bring the policy to the board at a future meeting. We also do not have a succession plan in place. That is another recommendation that is in there. We certainly have tons of procedures on how we do things, but we do not have a formal succession plan. And so that is something that I do think it is a good idea to do. As I told Anna and Kelly, I actually have presented numerous times on creating a succession plan. So it feels like not great that we don't have one.
For 2024, you'll.
So I will work on a succession plan, yes, for key positions in the library. Because like, it's not just for the director position, but also for other positions where there are not, like, Anna.
Anna's not going.
Anna is not ever allowed, but if she won the lottery and moved to Fiji.
I understand Iran would still make her work, so.
That's probably true. So, but in general, we are, as, not unexpectedly, given how we rank as a library, we are typically far exceeding the standards that are set. But I'm also happy to answer any questions anyone had on any of the checklist or any of the categories that the review covers. We don't pretty well. Yeah, I think so.
I don't see any questions.
No.
Okay, next item on the agenda, staff appreciation. So in terms of what we've done in the past, we've annually recognized the staff as a board in some way, shape or fashion. Pre-COVID, it was typically individual board members doing something on a designated day in November, throughout the course of a single week where we all did something in that week. During COVID, we switched to having the board as a whole do one specific item. An example is in 2021, the board purchased blizzards from Dairy Queen and had those brought in for the staff. Last year, we went back to trying to do the individual, each of us having a day where we bring something in. And it was essentially us bringing food for the staff. And so there was a little bit last year of kind of desire not to necessarily do that forever going forward. And so some of the things that have been kind of thrown out is that we as a board might want to try and do something different this year, perhaps maybe as a group, having one thing brought in to honor staff during November. But then Kate and I were talking about in the, was it February when we have the retreat?
Oh, May.
May, in May, when the staff.
Staff Development Day.
Development Day. So at some point during the day, have the board as a whole come in and then do something a little bit more formally at that point in time when the staff is here as a whole and they're not working, but they're going through their different training and seminars and things. Perhaps maybe at the end of the day, us doing something to kind of have a meet and greet so that we're here to interact with the staff and do a little something nice for them. And then that way, maybe make it a little bit nicer, a little more formal and have it involve us not just bringing things, put it down or leaving, but actually having an opportunity to talk with staff and. Is that something?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have from Graders. They do corporate and business packages. And they will, it's a really lovely looking presentation where they've got different flavors and toppings and.
Like a sundae bar?
Mm-hmm. And.
What is it, a bar or do they bring like individual?
They do little, little this size containers of different flavors of ice cream. And they, they have a party pack that includes six to 12 pints of ice cream, three dessert sauces, ice cream scooper. But there's a whole variety of them. So if we did one thing like that in November, maybe, I like the idea of the May, but I was thinking.
Oh, yeah, it is a dude balls.
Right.
So let the November and then come back in May and do something.
But there are things like this that are kind of a wow.
And are there problems with shifts or people who don't work every day or?
So we have 115 staff, of which about 45 are full-time. The rest of the staff range from substitutes who are only scheduled when needed. We have about a dozen of them. And then the remaining 55 are part-time, ranging from anywhere from like 12 hours a week to 28 hours a week. And yes, there definitely are different shifts, but we've, I mean, we've managed that with other, you know, like with the DQ blizzards. Anna picked all of them up and brought them in and then they were stored in the freezer. So we could have it where there were, you know, we have some and then we put it back out for the evening shifts. And we've done that before, so.
Well, it certainly would keep, I mean, better than the plate of brownies being brought in in the morning and then.
Gone by ten.
It's like, oh, yeah.
I think it's funny that you think there would be any left. Gone. Yeah.
I would be happy to get particulars on this, on the Graders thing, if there are other ideas, we can look at them.
Any other suggestions?
Or did you have something else in my?
We do have, Anna had found a really cute cookie place that we.
But they didn't, they didn't, they weren't nut-free.
Oh, they weren't nut-free, that's right.
So there was an issue with dietary restrictions.
So in terms of dietary restrictions with food, we have staff that are gluten, lactose, nut, as well as vegan. And then there are some other more very highly specific allergy things. And so we usually try to accommodate, not usually, we accommodate all of the different dietary needs. So I think that the Graders sounds delicious and we would need to do something.
But they have.
Non-dairy?
Yeah, they have non-dairy.
That are also vegan?
Yeah.
I don't know about the also vegan, I just know they have non-dairy.
They have vegan ice cream.
Do they? Okay, cool. And so, I mean, and then the other thing is like, we can also do, you know, like we just did for our school librarian meet and greet. The youth services staff did a nacho bar and that was really fun. Yeah, so I think, yeah.
I do like the ice cream because you can.
You can. It's easy to.
The people who are coming in later or.
And they're little small containers, so.
Yeah, so everyone gets, you get yours and you're not going to eat Janet's.
Don't touch anyone else's stuff.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so. And then the other thing, you know, we had thought of was, you know, we've brought in a food truck. That again, isn't great with shifts because if people aren't here. So, but that was something we've done in the past that has been popular.
What day is the, is it?
It's a Friday. It is.
May?
Hang on. I don't remember which May, which day.
No.
These are what? Are you looking at May?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's May 10th.
Okay, great. May 10th. And I think also having, you know, the board, I know many of you, like I'm thinking of Maura as a teacher. Like, that is maybe more challenging. And so if it would be easier too to do, you know, we do have some other like late open days that we could have if we did something like first thing in the morning with the board. You know, I guess I thought Staff Development Day would be a nice day, but I also recognize that you are all volunteers. And so we also want to make sure that it works for you.
Yeah, I mean, if the majority of us can make it, doesn't have to be.
And I'm, I mean, we're not talking about being here for the whole day, right?
No.
Yeah, so I.
Talking about coming towards the end of the day.
Yeah, I'm two minutes away. I can certainly come by.
Okay.
With hope, I would hope so.
Bring the students.
There you go. Bring them back. I was here with them last week.
Oh, were you here?
Yes.
Oh, that's awesome. They were wonder, oh my gosh, they loved it. We finished up, I think, you know, so yeah.
They really enjoyed it. The staff was so great. I was happy. It was very fun.
So what I'm hearing is, yes, November, one thing. Yes, May 10th for Staff Development Day. And yes, the one thing, Graders?
If you think.
Or a nacho bar? For all of it.
I think it all sounds good, but I'm open to. Strongly against it, but suggestions, but that all sounds good.
I like the idea of the Graders, to be honest with you. I think that sounds nice.
And I, I can forward the whole thing that they show. And they do it for large groups. So it comes foolproof with scoopers and everything.
Yeah.
So I'll be happy to forward it and I'll be happy to order it if you want.
Was it pints or is it individual?
They're little containers, each little.
When you say with scoops, it sounds like you scoop your own out and then.
No, this is.
Individual scoops.
Oh, like a spoon type of scoop, okay.
Right.
Got it. Because in my mind, I'm picturing the little Ben and Jerry's that are the individual and.
No, these are really small.
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah. They're like single serving style.
Yeah.
Like a half a serving.
Right.
How big your spoon is.
There you go.
Free delivery on Wednesdays.
Oh, wow.
Hopefully they're not charging too much to deliver.
Yeah, I know, right? We can just walk over.
Kate kind of brought up on the side whether that it's the most sustainable choice to have the individual cups. We've gone through that thought process in the past. And there's also concerns about sharing communal food still, even though, you know, we're post-COVID. But I do think that the individual containers will be more appealing because of the cleanliness factor. And so it, it might be a good question to ask, like, can they be compostable? Are they compostable containers or not? Just so we know because we can compost here. So if that's an option, that's great.
Recyclable.
But, but the individual, I think, works really nicely. And it does ensure that then everybody gets something, whereas if we're trying to share a gallon, you know, it might be gone by the time somebody gets it for their shift.
Maura is thinking this is one scoop and it's not, you know.
I also, and I think the, you know, if it, I think the sustainability is a good point and, you know, then maybe we don't use their plastic, maybe we're using.
Yeah, we can use our real silverware.
Yeah, because we have enough silverware for every single person on staff to eat ice cream at the exact same time if we wanted. Hey, ice cream is serious business.
That's what that levy is for.
No, yes, we plan for creators.
Right, well, unless there's other thoughts, then.
Can I?
So I was going to ask who's going to lead the charge.
That's a great question. I have another question as well. Would the board, because often you would write like a little note or thank you that you would put with it. Kelly had a great idea, I thought, of doing like a little video that the board, that we could then send to staff with this, which I thought would be really nice.
Well, when will we do the video?
Well, you can do it whenever you would like. I would say that each board member could say five or 10 seconds.
Oh, and then just email it.
And then just email it and we can just put them together.
Just do it on like.
Do it on your smartphone.
Do it on your phone. Yep, you can just text it to me or email it to me. Or if you're not sure how, we can set up a Zoom and I can record you and then. I, I'm happy to, like, that's not bad.
Give us a deadline.
Yes. So, well, when are we doing the ice cream?
That we're talking about.
Usually it would be late November before Thanksgiving.
It was the week of Veterans Day last year.
Okay.
How do you remember?
Because I don't work on Veterans Day and that was the day that I brought in cupcakes because I was like, this will be perfect. I have to deliver cupcakes and then I will take myself out for breakfast.
It was when I had COVID and so I had to, I was like frantically trying to get everything delivered because I was, my delivery day was, I was sitting.
What, what beat our day is Veterans Day?
Yeah. November 11th.
November 11th is a Sunday this year.
Yeah.
Or when it's being.
It's a Friday.
So it's Friday.
Friday is the official day off.
Yeah, so 10th.
So. We're here. Do we want to do something the week of the 13th? Maybe the 15th, since that's a Wednesday? And I hear Graders has free delivery on Wednesdays.
Why not?
So, so if you guys can get.
Wait, Kate, you're out of the library that day, aren't you?
Yeah. I don't need to be here for ice cream to be delivered, do I?
No, but you're not going to be able to participate and partake.
Let's put her name on one and put in the freezer.
Right.
Problem solved.
There will be lots of people that won't be here on that day that will have to get it the next day.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be here on the 16th as a board.